All right, I have one o'clock now, so I'll call the meeting to the order. For Tuesday, July second, two thousand twenty-four. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Jolly attending via Zoom. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Council Mackay.
I can only go and let services switches me on. That the July second, two thousand twenty-four agenda be adopted as presented and then this day in nineteen thirty-seven was the last time Amelia Earhart and Fred Noonan were heard from.
You adding that to the agenda? Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, getting into our agenda, we have presentations next, and we do have one presentation scheduled a couple of weeks ago. The business improvement area is here with us. It was supposed to be Shannon Roach, but it sounds like she can't come, but so we have Elena Brown. Excuse me, who is the vice president of the downtown BIA. So why don't you come to the mic? Five minutes and you wanted to speak about your strategic plan, right? All right, thanks for joining us. I was just about to say, I don't think the mic's on.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So I wanted to present our downtown business association strategic plan. I will try and go through fast, set a few slides. So our vision statement. To transform downtown St. Albert into a vibrant must-visit destination that celebrates our rich heritage, fosters community spirit, and thrives as a hub of innovation, culture, and commerce. We envision a downtown that is not only the heart of St. Albert, but also a beacon of community pride and a testament to the city's dynamic growth and sustainability. Our mission statement, our BIA is dedicated to revitalizing and promoting the downtown areas as a vibrant community center. Through strategic partnerships, innovative marketing, and community-focused events, we aim to enhance the visibility and appeal of downtown, encouraging both residents and visitors to explore, shop, and engage with local businesses. By fostering an environment that supports business growth, cultural enrichment, and sustainable urban development, we are committed to making downtown St. Albert a thriving, accessible, and attractive place for everyone. Okay, so economic development and business growth, so our objective is to enhance the economic vitality of downtown by supporting existing businesses and attracting new enterprises. And our strategies for that are to work with the city of St. Albert to conduct a comprehensive business assessment to identify suitable types of businesses for vacant spaces, and work with the landlords to attract these businesses to downtown St. Albert. Investment attraction, so create marketing materials and campaigns targeting potential investors and businesses, highlighting the benefits of operating in downtown St. Albert. So utilizing the DVA website that is currently being built to bring this to fruition. Incubation and innovative spaces. We want to work with the businesses to establish and entice coworking spaces, business incubators, and innovation hubs to foster entrepreneurship and innovation. Cultural and community enrichment, so our objective there is to celebrate and promote the rich cultural heritage of St. Albert while fostering a strong sense of community. So cultural events and festivals, we're going to work on organizing regular events and festivals that highlight local arts, music, and traditions, attracting both residents and visitors. Public art installations collaborate with local artists to create murals, sculptures, and other public art that reflects the community heritage and values. And community engagement programs develop initiatives that encourage community participation such as volunteer opportunities, heritage tours, and educational workshops. For our marketing and promotion, we just want to increase the visibility and appeal of downtown to both residents and visitors. We will do lots of this with our downtown website. We will work on branding and identity, digital marketing campaigns. So we have a social media platform set up. We have Instagram and Facebook already going. And our websites being worked on, and we'll partner with local businesses and organizations to create joint marketing campaigns and promotions. Infrastructure and urban development, so is to approve the infrastructure and urban environment to make downtown more accessible, attractive, and sustainable. Some of these strategies were safety and waste reduction, so adding more garbage receptacles, fix security lighting in areas that do not currently have them and support public safety measures. So so far, we have had one new garbage can that's approved and two security lights. We will work with the landlords to add security lighting on private properties where we're having issues with lighting there. Public transportation and accessibility, so we're going to advocate for improved public transportation options and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure to make downtown more accessible. We would like to work with the city to improve sidewalks and mitigate any tripping hazards from the current cobblestone walkways. Beautification projects, so implement streetscape enhancements including landscaping, street furniture, and lighting to create inviting and aesthetically pleasing environment. So this includes adding seasonal and yearly lighting to approximately forty trees and wrapping the trunks to bring more traffic down.
That's just your thirty-second warning. Don't worry about it.
Okay, this might be longer than that. Currently, we've added extra ten planters to the downtown area, and the tree trunk wrapping has been approved. We're looking to work with the city in regards to set up and or take down of the lights yearly, as we are going to utilize the same vendor that the city uses for seasonal lighting, which is CLG. Our hopes is to make the lighting project seamless and cost-effective. We're requesting permission to utilize the current lighting in the downtown area that is wrapped on the tops of the trees to take those off and wrap more trees in the downtown area, the trunks and the branches. Seating in public spaces, so adding extra seating areas, creating inviting public spaces or socialization and relaxation, to therefore drive more business to the downtown area. Okay, entertainment and engagement, so that's to transform downtown St. Albert into an entertainment district. I took a couple quotes, small downtown areas often struggle to maintain a unique identity in the face of urbanization and commercialization. However, an entertainment district can serve as a catalyst for rediscovering and celebrating a community's history and heritage. And an entertainment district has the power to transform a small downtown area, breathing new life into struggling communities. Use the area. Okay, so the patio program is part of the entertainment district. It's to implement a patio program to encourage outdoor dining and socialization, generating more foot traffic and making downtown more lively. Live music and performances, the hope is to organize live music events and performances to create a vibrant atmosphere and attract visitors. And then open carry zones, consider establishing zones where they can carry alcoholic beverages similar to other successful districts and bring in more foot traffic. So that would be part of our entertainment district guideline, very border area. Seasonal events, so host seasonal events and activities to keep the downtown area dynamic and engaging. So after discussion with the city members, we have planned to shift our seasonal events budget to the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year to properly plan and execute this. We're just requesting assistance from the city to ensure the rollout is smooth and executed properly, and we think we were a little bit excited about trying to do that this year, and we realized it might have been a little bit too hasty, so we're wanting to shift that part of the budget to next year. And then, so it's approximately ten thousand one hundred and fifty from our budget this year and shift it to next year to have more events. Partnerships and collaborations, so build strong partnerships with the city of St. Albert, city council, and businesses of downtown St. Albert. So we want to regularly engage with local businesses, community organizations, and government entities to gather feedback and foster collaboration. Our website is due to be finalized in about three weeks, and once that's done, we'll send out information to all the businesses in our area. We're utilizing our marketing budget for a mix of electronic and paper flyers to inform businesses about our progress. Public-private partnerships, so develop partnerships with businesses. They'll be able to contact us through the website and through our annual AGMs and any other extra meetings to make this successful. Grant funding, we will be actively seeking out grants and sponsorship opportunities. And collaboration with the city, we'll work closely with the city of St. Albert to coordinate events and efforts and ensure a successful implementation of our initiatives, such as infrastructure, public safety, and urban development. And then we will measure our performance through KPIs. We will do regular reporting and look at feedback mechanisms to see what's working and what's not. And so our one-to-three-year plan is to leverage board members to oversee the implementation of the strategic plan, initiate marketing campaigns and community engagement programs, commence infrastructure improvements and beautification products, projects, including the installation of garbage receptacles, security lighting, seating areas, year-round potted plants, and seasonal lighting. Collaborate with the city to conduct a comprehensive business assessment, identifying suitable businesses for vacant spaces. And then establish our KPIs for that. And then we will support the city of St. Albert in working with landlords to attract new businesses and enhance the success of existing downtown enterprises. We feel like we are not able to do that solely ourselves, so we were asking help with the city. And then begin organizing downtown festivals and events and develop a formal proposal for establishing an entertainment district. So that's one to three. Year four to six, so continue collaboration with the city to attract new businesses and support current ones. Expand the frequency and scale of cultural events and festivals. Strengthen partnerships with local businesses. Implement the patio program and organize live music events for the development, the entertainment district. Year seven to ten, evaluate the impact of initiatives and refine strategies, persist in developing and promoting downtown St. Albert, and secure additional funding and resources to support long-term sustainability and growth. Conclusion, so from the introduction of new public amenities to the promotion of cultural events to drive economic growth, enhance community engagement, and instill a sense of pride and vitality in the downtown St. Albert. With a clear roadmap and dedicated effort, this plan will transform our downtown into a thriving hub of activity and innovation embodying the true spirits of St. Albert's heritage and future aspirations. And this plan, through the downtown business association, sets forth a comprehensive vision to transform downtown St. Albert into a vibrant must-visit entertainment district. This plan leverages the strengths and opportunities of the area, incorporating infrastructure improvements, business attraction efforts, cultural enrichment, and a robust marketing strategy. By fostering strong partnerships with the city and private sector stakeholders, we aim to create a safe, accessible, and dynamic environment that attracts both residents and visitors. Apologies for the length of it.
It's okay. We have the flexibility sometimes, especially at the discretion of the chairs. And this was important, so I will now open it up to members of our council to ask questions if anyone has any. Council Kilik.
Thanks, Lenny, for presenting, and I'm super pleased to see a strategic plan that takes us out seven to ten years. Shows that there's a long-term vision and, and most importantly, commitment to the whole strategy of a downtown, a vibrant downtown, so I applaud you on that. As well, I would say that it's good to have a strategic plan rather than just jumping into an operational plan, because that's kind of sometimes the easiest way to approach things. But I do have, I think you had a question in there specifically about the carryover of, I think it was ten thousand fifteen dollars or one hundred and fifteen, I didn't write the number down quick enough, but so in the council approves your budgets, is that an exact, a specific ask for approval today? And I would look to administration as to say, is that how we have to do carryovers of budget as has been asked today at the presentation?
Yeah, I wrote down the question for admin about that exact thing. Do they need permission? But we will let you answer if that's what you thought today.
Yeah, it was a specific ask. The hundred and fifty dollars was for the entertainment district. I believe it was for like registration as an entertainment district, and then we allotted about ten thousand dollars for seasonal events, so that would be some live music festivals in more of the summer time. So obviously, we're in the summer and we were excited about it, but realized that maybe it was a bit too quick. So if we could shift that over to next year and keep that amount, that would be amazing. I'm just not entirely sure how that works either.
Okay, so we'll, we've heard the ask from downtown business association, we'll come back to administration, ask that question of how we actually operationalize that. The other one, and we rolled through the slides pretty quick, I noticed. And I would like to talk about some of the operational things that we hope we would see this year to kind of understand where we're at with those, so I think we had a slide that said we're not going to replace a lot of the dead trees that are downtown and we're could you give us a bit of a bit more background on that?
So for the dead trees, there's quite a few dead trees in the downtown area. We had met with the city to discuss the options of that, and from my understanding, it's that some of those could not be replaced due to the fact that they will die right away if we replace them. And we'd asked for like something additional, so one of the options was putting planters over top of the tree wells instead, and I believe it's in process, and that is a great option, I think, for what we could do instead of planting a tree there, it's just going to die.
Okay.
So that was one of them. Garbage receptacles was an ask. We did get one approved, which is a great start. I do believe we still need more, but that's a thing we have to work on with the city. The tree lighting was the other ask, because right now the tree lighting that's wrapped around the top of the trees stays on all year. And our hope with our budget is we can wrap about forty trees, like the trunks and the branches, was to utilize the lights that are on top of the trees and wrap more of the trees downtown, and then work with the city to either have the lights be put up or taken down, but it is in our budget to put up and take them down yearly.
Okay, and that's still a work in progress? We haven't?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll follow up with the administration on that one. I think you said safety, street lighting, so?
So safely street lighting, it looks like two have been approved, like timeline pending depending on fortis. And then the other spots that had been an issue for us are on private property. So our hope is to reach out to the landlords to see if they're willing to invest in a couple of security lights to make those areas safer.
Okay. And the last one I wrote down really quick was sidewalk improvements, and I think that was, I think you said trip hazards?
Yeah, mostly from the
So there's lots of those missing bricks and?
Yeah, lots of missing bricks, lots of trip hazards. I believe the city had done an initial assessment saying there was a couple areas. But our main concern is if we start doing bigger events and have more people downtown, there likely will be more incidents of people tripping or falling, and our hope is to mitigate that beforehand, if at all possible.
Okay. Thanks, hell. I wanted to make sure that I had those whatever five or six questions clear from your presentation, and then we can follow up with administration. Thanks.
Thank you.
You asked most of my questions, Council Kilik, but Council Broadhead has some.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Obviously, you put a lot of work into that. So my question is, as you were considering your strategic plan, and seems to me one of the corner stones of your plan is an entertainment district. As you were thinking about that, what was your vision for that?
Yeah, so we did present that the last time we were here as well. But the the goal is to have an area that is an entertainment district where people can carry open alcohol from one point to another. It's closed off from traffic. It brings more people downtown. Our hope is to start like two days a week, so whether that's like Friday, Saturday evenings, and those are the set days. If it's successful, we can open up more days, but to just have an area that is an entertainment district where it brings more business to the restaurants downtown, to the pubs. We're hoping to drive and bring more interest in those kind of businesses to the downtown area if you do have an entertainment district. It also ties into the assessment to see what kind of businesses can fit downtown as well, too. So really working together with everyone to see what can we make work and what does that look like, but just having a great place for people to come down and enjoy downtown St. Albert.
Okay, so traditionally, the downtown has sort of been viewed as Perron and St. Anne. Are you visioning over to Tache and up by Amicon as well, being part of your entertainment district or?
Yeah, so right now it is Perron. It doesn't go all the way up St. Anne. It goes down St. Thomas, St. Michael. That's our area right now. Our hope is that people see what we are doing, and they want to be a part of the area and the association, and then we can open it up further as we go.
Well, I, yeah, I'm all for this. The question is, how do we get it done? And how do we actually bring people downtown? So the tactics of how you manage that will be interesting to hear your ideas, and certainly it'd be helpful if the city was a full participant in that.
Yes.
That's what I heard from you there.
Yes.
I too have a question of administration, but we'll get to that when they do. Thanks.
Council Brumansky.
Thank you, Elena. A few questions here related to the public art that you've mentioned, you know, installing, and where's the intention of that on businesses or?
Yeah, so we recently found out that where there's going to be a big sidewalk or crosswalk mural at that four-way pedestrian cross on Perron and St. Anne. What we would like to do, one of our members is through the Arts and Heritage District, so we would love to do every crosswalk with a mural and hire local artists to do those. We also are going to talk to some businesses. You know how the Red Love has their mural with the angel wings down there? People come and take photos down there. We want to see if we can get more murals on more businesses. We do need buy-in from the landlords, though, to make it so people want to come down, even if it's just to take a selfie with a really cool mural. I, we believe it's going to bring more business downtown, and then they're going to check out the shops while they're there.
Okay, and so we do have a public art policy, and you know, as you know, some of them have been removed from buildings because landlords didn't want them on the buildings and such. So would you, your intent be to work with the Arts Advisory Committee then?
Absolutely, so because Leah works for, is with the Arts and Heritage, we're hoping that she'll be able to help us out with that, and then talk to the landlords to see, obviously, we need the buy-in from the landlords to be okay with it, to see who would be okay with it and who would not be okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the seating, you said extra seating, are you talking on the sidewalks or what location?
So public seating, there's a couple areas that we looked at that we thought would be a great space for either picnic tables or more benches, so people can come enjoy their lunch outside, maybe come enjoy their lunch and visit some of the other businesses that are around. That was our hope.
Okay, and attracting visitors was, I think it was in your first plan there, are you doing that through your website? Because you had mentioned that you're targeting businesses within the city, are you going further, like outside of St. Albert to attract visitors or?
Yeah, so once our website's all done, the plan is to first of all, contact all the businesses, so they know what's going on through our website, and we're going to go around and give flyers to all the businesses. So we have a list of all the businesses on the website, and then we're going to implement a marketing plan that involves more awareness. Even like things like the trees, extra planters, letting people know that they can come down. It's going to be a beautiful place to walk around. And it's going to be a slow start, I think, but I think once we get, if we can get the entertainment district rolling next summer, I think that's going to really help out to bring more people down.
Okay, I just checked if I got, oh, and the other question I have is related to hours of operation, like if you're having events and whatever, is is that discussion ever come forward with the businesses about being open later in the evenings or?
Yeah, so when we do our AGM in November, we're going to have those discussions with the businesses to say this is when events are going on. We suggest you open up to allow customers to come in and shop or eat or whatever that looks like. We were aware that Wednesday evenings is the slowest for restaurants downtown St. Albert. So even building a plan where maybe on Wednesday evenings, that's where we have live, a live event where people would come down and bring more business to the businesses that are a bit slower those days.
Excellent. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Council Hughes has some as well.
I don't actually have a question, I just have a statement. I think you guys have really thought through this very carefully. I think that it's been done realistically. I think that your three main draws, which is both aesthetics, just convenience of being able to use it, and then just the drawdown, I think with the marketing, I think it's, I think it's well done. And I think that your timelines and what you're trying to achieve have all been well thought through, instead of trying to bite off everything at once and then fail. So I just wish you guys the best of success as you guys move forward.
Thank you.
And Council Jolly, you're good? Awesome. Well, all my questions were asked, except for some maybe for administration, so Elaine, thanks for coming. I'm quite excited about what we might see in the future, especially with the patio program. That'll be good, yeah. All right, let's move on to some, I know there's some questions that have arisen in your brains on that presentation for administration, so you had some, Council Kilik, for sure. I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for you to administration. It sounded like we made the decision not to replace trees, which is okay if they're going to be replaced and die. Doesn't make sense, but just a status on replacing them with new flower pots would be, because the summer is here, we've already had our first couple of big events, so.
Thanks, I'll get Director Public Ops to talk more holistically, but maybe I could offer in short, you hit the nail on the head, planting trees so they could die again seemed like a sort of waste of time, effort, and money, so figuring out why they're dying and finding a longer-term solution ultimately was the thought process behind that. There are additional flower pots put out already, you'll see them along the main street, and I think at the risk of getting a little bit ahead of you, perhaps I could ask with the indulgence of council to get public ops to talk about their downtown assessment, because I think it will deal with not only the trees, but the sidewalks assessment, the tripping hazards, and some of the other issues.
Sure. Sorry, through the chair to Council Kilik, with respect to the trees, the existing tree vaults consist of approximately a one meter by one meter cube. And that is a far, far cry from what our urban forest management plan requires for soil conditions. So we've discussed and we've reviewed why some of the trees in the downtown area are thriving, and our analysis is leading us to believe that those trees preexisted, the sidewalk and the actual root system is outside of a vault as it is now. There's some tree locations where the tree has had three iterations, and just that particular well is not allowing the tree to thrive. So what we have proposed is to fill those in on a short-term basis and place with the flower planters there, which are more easily maintained and kept to a beautiful standard. Ultimately, trees can thrive in downtown areas. An example would be the north side of Tache when that was rebuilt a couple of years back. There's different systems and different methods of construction that are used for accommodating the root system adjacent to a road system and underneath the sidewalk. In the, in the future, when we are looking to rehabilitate the sidewalk road systems, that's the type of systems we'd be looking to install as part of that work. With respect to the tripping hazards, tripping hazards are a priority for public operations in the city. The tripping hazards have been identified and are worked on on a yearly basis. There is one area on the west side of Perron Street, south of St. Michael, that has particularly difficult drainage, basically the soil conditions in the downtown area will hold water in areas. So the bricks themselves do undulate towards the building, and it is a particular difficult area. However, we will continue to maintain that to achieve our service levels. However, we will continue to maintain that to uh achieve our service levels. Um, with respect to the tree lighting, we are, we are engaged into that so that our service provider can accommodate the request. We're just making sure we do our due diligence as far as accommodating tree growth. So that the, the, this mesh surrounds for the trees do not inhibit the growth of the tree and the, allow the tree to thrive.
And maybe you can speak to the status of um Fortis and St. Joseph, I think it was the end of. St. Joseph.
Uh, yeah, through the chair to Council Kilik, we have confirmed with borders that it's scheduled for this year. We just don't know their actual definitive schedule. We suspect it should be completed before the end of uh September. But once we get more details, um, all I can confirm right now is that it is scheduled for this year and it, it is in the planning process for delivery.
Uh, yeah, great. I mean, summertime, it's laid out, wintertime is when we probably need it, so that, that timeline, Mr. Shick is perfect. I think um that, that would be a great uh addition. And the, the other one seemed to be garbage cans. It sounds like a small item, but um. And it, I think the slide said one of several, one has been added, but there were several. Potential other sites that were still being evaluated, so I, I. I'm not sure when I hear evaluated, whether that means. What that means.
So through the Chair to Council Kilik, I've, I've walked the downtown and I've reviewed the locations and I identified the location where we have added the, the garbage container. We do have additional refuse containers that will be brought in for special events and at this time we feel that that is. Appropriate for the amount of trash that is being generated downtown.
I, I would mention for every additional garbage can, um, that's a service level increase at the end of the day, right? And so it's not just throw it out, um, they've got to be emptied, right? They've got to maintain. So from a city perspective, in accordance with our uh guidelines, um. We're good. Um, clearly, the, the DBA would ask for more. Um, that's a capacity and a money issue. It's a service level issue fundamentally if we end up servicing those garbage counts.
And I, I guess my question around that is, does that meter, like there's this huge peak every Saturday because of farmers market. And then the, the garbage can sit full for until they're emptied to, to our service level and, and I get that. Um, but does, does the current level accommodate the peak or is it a? Kind of across a period of. A, a, a longer period of time.
Uh, through the Chair to Council, the, the current peaks with the special events are accommodated and they are emptied and, and taken away. In the event that we are observing a trash issue, we will remove it. It, it's not like we'll wait and have them overflowing. So at this time, we, we're not agreeing that there is an issue. Uh, we feel that we are currently meeting the needs of the city.
Okay, great. Um, uh, thank you for the kind of operational. Comments or status, I appreciate that. Um, I would like to ask administration then around the. Request for carryover budget and how we are best to accommodate that. So we've, it, it, it sounds like we've actually got an early ask from the DBA uh in their. Their budget, they're not at year end when you would traditionally or more traditionally see a carryover request. Um, we're kind of mid, early on in things and. Do we need to do anything special to say that ten thousand one hundred and fifty would be carried over into? Twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. We've got actually Director Finance online and go ahead.
Hey, good afternoon, Council. Thanks for the question, Counselor Kilik. We'll probably take that as an IR. Um, just because this is a new um agreement and we just want to double check on the process. It likely will require council approval, but we just want to follow up on the administration process as a new.
I, I, IR, no problem.
And I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's not a matter of it being carried over. It's just making sure we do it properly.
Exactly, that's what's, thanks for clarifying. That would be, we'd be. Oh, doing all purposes to make sure it's carried forward properly. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would add that if it does require council permission, um, maybe a. Change to the bylaw or something, so it doesn't require council permission. I mean, this money does belong to the businesses of the downtown. So it should stay with the, so whatever processes need to be in place to do that, that. Add that into the IR, Mike. Okay. Uh, any more questions? Because that was my big one. Um. Go ahead, Wes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so back to the entertainment district, back to. The idea around uh patios and the, and the idea of an open carry zone. Is that even within uh cities' ability to grant? I mean, Stephen. Stephen Avenue doesn't have open carry, does it? In Calgary, you'd think that would be possible.
Uh, I can try to speak to that, Council Broadhead. So um, the AGLC enables communities to pass a bylaw. Which designates an entertainment district with regulations regarding. The provision of alcohol uh and cannabis within and consumption within. So that's, that's where it's limited. The city would have to basically approve a bylaw that would designate. An area that is uh an entertainment district. Uh, we've seen a number of communities so far. Red Deer has uh an entertainment district. Oka Toks, I believe, has passed one. Um, Edmonton has passed one, Red Deer, yeah. So there's, there's a few that have done it already. It would just be a matter of the, the where and the how.
Well, learned something today. Uh, there you go. So. We pass a bylaw and all of a sudden uh Perron uh becomes an open carry and away you go. Is that how it works?
Something along those lines, within the parameters of AGLC.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, not sad, I, there's, there's far more to it than that in terms of the homework to underpin the controls that are in place designation of the area. There's, there's a lot that gets you to the point where you ask AGLC for that permission that the, the staff has to work through.
Okay, fair enough. Uh.
Can I just, did we have to ask AG's AGLC permission to allow the um? No, the drinking in Lions Park and Kingswood Park. Yeah?
That Diane's nodding yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um, before we go on to your next question, I think our current MLA, who is also in charge of AGLC. Would be very happy if St. Albert did that. He's been asking me to, to get it moving. They brought.
Uh, you know what? It's, it's innovative and it'll bring the people downtown. I, it's not that I'm against that. I just didn't know we could do it, so.
I think it will take some socializing with the residents in the downtown.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah. They also talked about year-round planters. I had to get into this. I mean, this is your area responsibility. Is that a possibility?
They're, just through the Chair to Council Broadhead, quite frankly, anything is possible. Um, it, I don't, like a planter, we could do year-round planters and we have talked about. Different types of uh foliage to go into planters, but yes, we could. Uh, it would just. Service levels that we are looking to achieve for the downtown area would be the debate.
Anything is possible, I guess, if you got the money and the will. All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Uh, Counselor Hughes, just real quick then, because I'm going to follow up on that. Yeah, is it possible, I'm going to do an IR just to ask you guys how much it would cost if we did that, not just for the downtown, but to replace. The planters like on the trail, et cetera, or what the ramifications would be of that? Because if you have like evergreen, I'm just thinking of those little evergreen shrubby things. I'm not telling you to do, I'm just thinking the same thing. It would definitely improve the aesthetics in winter as well, so. I'm going to put an IR, I, I don't know if it needs to be a BIR, like it doesn't need to be filled out this second, but I think that might be a discussion we may want to have later on this year. That's it, thank you. Uh, one last question I have is, was Sean, that was the big, look at you, Mike, um, point of contact for the BIA. Um, and now I believe it's probably you. Uh, is it going to remain with you or is when we replace Sean or I don't even know where we are in that process? Just feel like that's a lot for your plate and BIA would probably really appreciate a point of contact, so do, do you know what the plan is for that?
Yes, the, the manager of Business Retention Expansion will be the primary liaison for the downtown business.
You haven't, you haven't filled that position?
That position, the new person starts in that role tomorrow.
Oh, cool. And then, and I would, and Tim as well, as like, because it's kind of a dual role. I'm seeing a lot.
Yes, but I would offer that, 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 especially in the early days, the single point of entry is very important. It just makes life easier. So that's economic development who can then um corral, galvanize, um, you know, the, the city departments required to answer those questions. So I would just say for the, the, the DBA, remain with economic development is the point of entry, just to make life.
That's fine, yeah, okay. So later night, somebody's starting tomorrow, give them a couple of weeks to get their feet under them and then take them for a walk through the downtown.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, no more questions. Thank you for coming. We're all, I think, quite excited about this.
Thank you.
Let us know if you need anything. All right, uh, let's get into the agenda, consent agenda. Nothing was pulled off, which is amazingly awesome. So can I have someone make that motion? Yep, Mr. Kilik, thank you.
That the recommendations in the follow agenda reports be approved. Six dot one, regular council meeting minutes of June eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Seven dot one, Environmental Advisory Committee Recommendations. Environmental Management of Contaminated Sites Policy, C dash IS dash zero six amendments. And nine dot one bylaw fifteen slash twenty twenty-four amendment to traffic bylaw eighteen slash. Twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty oh five.
Awesome. Thank you for that call for the vote. Voting's closed, passes unanimously. So we just passed uh the minutes from our June eighteenth uh twenty twenty-four meeting on consent. We also passed the Environmental Advisory Committee Recommendation. I'll read it to you all. It's bigger. Uh, that the amended council policy CIS zero six, environmental management of contaminated sites. Attached to gender report entitled Environment Advisory Committee Recommendations, Environment Management of Contaminated Sites Policy. CIS zero six amendments dated July second twenty-four be approved. And we are now. No small item, Ray Gibbon and a increase to the budget. So uh, Mr. Shick, you have a bit of a presentation?
I do, yeah, it's just hopefully a quick.
By the way, the background on this was really good. I asked a bunch of questions and as I kept reading, it was answered, so it was really well done. So thanks for that.
Fantastic, that's good to hear. Um, so yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Dean Shick. I'm the manager of Transportation with Engineering Services and I'm happy to be here today to uh present to you a background and a brief uh project status update. And make a formal funding request for the next phases of the Ray Given Drive project. Uh, this should be a brief presentation that will go over the Ray Given Drive project itself, its purpose, uh, background on a cost share agreement that the city has with the province. And a status update with acknowledgement of the recommendation from administration that's before council today. Uh, and then of course I'll go on and ask for any further questions following the presentation. As, as well known, the Ray Given Drive project is expected to deliver the widening of the corridor from the south city limit. Um, to expected north terminus of the Villanue Road or future uh tie-in to Fowler Way. The results will be a four-lane cross-section with a combination of active modes, uh, such as a new trail or applicable intersection improvements. And supplemental work uh for street lighting and utility work. This is a, a second stage, if you will, of the corridor is in its long-term vision as an eight-lane freeway with interchanges. Some key background information on the Ray Given Project itself would be that the improvements have been planned and initiated through a multi-phase and multi-year. Uh, project delivery with four phases that have largely been split by using the arterial connections to the corridor as breakpoints. Um, and the work is uh planned to occur uh that has started in twenty nineteen and anticipated to be completed by twenty twenty-nine. This phasing map shown on the left of the slide here, although small, I apologize, is uh just shows the breakdown of the four phases. Um, and uh, I'll give a brief update as far as where we're at right now. But uh, the cost estimates for the planned improvements were developed through initial conceptual estimates. Um, that were updated as the project has advanced through preliminary to detailed design. The concept estimates were what were used to inform on the initial uh city project charter for the funding request to start the project. As well as the original cost share agreement that was drafted between the city and the province. Overall, the original total estimated cost for widening Ray Given Drive back in the twenty nineteen timeframe was around fifty-four point two million dollars. The city and province have finalized a cost share agreement in the twenty nineteen that recognized a fifty-fifty cost share split. And identified that the city would front-end the initial first two phases, um, which were estimated to be just higher than the twenty-seven million dollar value. And the province would front-end the costs or come into the cost share agreement with phases three and four. Uh, with their portion of funds anticipated to begin around twenty twenty-five. For clarity as well, for uh council's acknowledgement here, uh, the city has also captured additional improvements to be completed with the Ray Given Drive project itself. But are outside of the scope of the provincial influence of the cost share agreement. So there's additional the tie-ins to arterial roadways that are municipal roadways only, such as Leclerc Way that was done in phase one. McKenney Avenue that was completed in phase two and with phase three planned improvements to Giroux Road or Township Road five forty-eight. Improvements to, again, Regimen Drive started in twenty nineteen with design work of phase one, uh, which was approved and completed through a dedicated project fund. Construction of phase one then began in twenty twenty as well as design work and uh for phase two and the next following phases. Phase one and two to date have been completed as of the end of twenty twenty-three. Along with the additional scope of the additional arterial roadway connections, again, Leclerc Way and McKenney Avenue with phase one and two. And we also coordinated work with the Anthony Henday Drive westbound off-ramp as well as the old one thirty-seventh avenue uh intersection improvements. Engineering and design work has been completed as well for the next phases, three and four. Uh, with detailed design being completed for phase three and preliminary design being completed for phase four. Essentially, what this means is phase three is at a state of readiness for construction. Phase four requires additional design work to be completed. Um, in, in prior to uh its readiness for construction. From the results of the detailed design work and preliminary design work for phases three and four, it was identified that construction costs. Uh, that were originally estimated are now estimated to be higher than the original estimates. The total project costs are estimated to have increased from the original fifty-four point two million dollars. Uh, or twenty-seven point one, thereabouts, cost share split between city and province. To a total of seventy point two million dollars, which reflects a fifty-fifty cost share split of approximately thirty-five point one million per partner. Uh, again, between the city and the province, which is an increase of just over eight million dollars per partner. Within the provincial budget, there's a confirmed acknowledgement of the Ray Given Drive funding. And the value also captures the increased estimate cost value, confirming the province's commitment of funding to the updated cost value of estimates provided. The city has also received, and this is just kind of new information, a letter dated June twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four from the Minister of Transportation, Economic Corridors. Uh, that highlights and confirms the province's commitment to the project and its full funding. Because of the cost adjustments, city administration and province representatives are now updating the cost share agreement to reflect the updated costs. And schedule for completion for the construction of phases three and four. The status of this agreement is that administration is awaiting just final approval and uh signing from the province representation. Again, I just want to revisit and for clarity, identify that uh in terms of the values requested from the city administration. Our request is slightly higher than the eight million dollar split of the cost share between the province. And this reflects a slight increase again to represent the costs for improving the Giroux corridor. So again, the tie-in to the, the arterial roads that are the municipal uh responsibility. And outside of the cost share of the uh Ray Given Drive, the provincial, provincial cost share for the project. But will be completed and tied in in coordination with the Ray Given Project, Project itself. Before council today is the recommendation to approve Charter Enj oh seven four. Which approves the Ray Given Drive project that will be funded largely by the provincial grant funding. And please note that the grant funding again can, uh, does capture the complete new construction cost estimates. The funding requested does include the city's new updated value for the Ray Given Drive project, to which there's an additional value of just over eight million. That reflects our portion of the fifty percent cost share and which reflects the increased cost estimates for the Ray Given Drive project. And the be, beyond this value is the additional cost associated with the planned coordinated improvements of the Giroux Corridor, uh, corridor. Uh, that's tied in with the phase three improvements for scheduling. Please note that the value of eight point three eight five million, five hundred thousand is the value remaining within the existing Ray Given Drive borrowing bylaw. So administration does not anticipate that there's any new or additional update to the borrowing bylaw that exists today for the Ray Given Drive project. Uh, without, that concludes the presentation. I can happily address any questions.
There are lots lined up. Um, I'm going to start real quick. On page six of your port, forty-one of the package. Is the year, construction stage, and then the revised costs. Is the year construction stage and then the revised costs? This has got nothing to do with the motion. I'm just curious why phase three. Is the most expensive of the construction uh costs? And I was wondering if it had something to do with the rail crossing.
Uh, it it does. It includes the scope for the rail. Um, there's also L to link the power uh lines that we're having to address. Uh, for this as well as in that, which is also in line with the next phases, but. The the key kind of outliers are the CN crossing as well as the L to link.
And it will be an at grade crossing still?
Currently, yeah, under the four, the four lane uh widening, everything will be at grade crossings.
Okay, perfect. I will get into some of the probably better questions, Council Broadhead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Schick. Uh, again, a great report. So my question to you, let's, let's start with that uh. Crossing on uh Ray Given.
Wes doesn't want any whistles.
Yes. Will it be built to his standards so that uh it will pass muster when it comes to our whistle cessation by law?
Absolutely, yes. So uh twofold in the the wholeness of time, everything will be built at a at grade crossing to allow um. Our bylaw, which our bylaw already captures the Ray Given Drive crossing, so there's no need for. Approvals or changes. It's really just, once we get that crossing upgraded, uh get uh the CN approval. Then it can be enacted as a specification. And over the wholeness of time, of course, that uh, you know, as you start to see great separation with intersections. There's warrant values that transportation, uh so um Canada Transport Canada requires for a grade separated crossing, a rail crossing. And right now we're not near that warrant value. So it'll be a warrant, uh it'll be a at grade rail crossing quite some time. But needing the whistle cessation standards.
Perfect. So the uh tie-ins. McKinney, is that one done? The McKinney of the tie-in to Ray Given that.
Correct, yes.
So that one's done?
Yes.
Okay, and uh. Given that I use Drew uh myself quite often, I'm glad to see that one coming about. So uh, so my follow-up question then is is that the. You know the risk in the, in the background or that you may have another cash call if the prices continue to go up. That gets minimized if the construction starts happening right away. The sooner we get it done, the tighter the uh, you know. The the cost factors are. Are when, when do we turn dirt on the next stage?
So it's anticipated actually that uh with our, with our approval and with the provincial contribution, uh they kick in in Q one and the Q one in twenty twenty five. And so essentially the project, we can put it in a position to have it tender ready over the winter of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And start get the tender out and uh contracted out for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six construction.
Okay.
For phase three, phase four, we also are amending the agreement, the verbiage a little bit to recognize the potential cost impacts over time. Um, but again, we are actually investigating what opportunities exist for a multi-phase contract and what the benefits pros and cons are, but. Right now we're focused on phase three.
Any chance price goes down? Just kidding.
I won't make any guarantees.
Never know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those were my two questions.
Counselor McKay.
Price will go down when my weight goes down. Um. The Fowler Way overlap and the coordination with that, because I mean, you're looking at twenty twenty nine and that's kind of when we're going to be starting and. Finishing, I think that's the timeline we have in place for Fowler. How is that gonna go and how does that? Factor in because I mean, there's going to have to be some integration in relation to planning, particularly. Right around Bill New, Frank?
Yeah, thank you very much um for for that question. Right now, we're actually in, it's it's being coordinated very well in regards to the planning and the design work. Uh, we have Fowler Way that's in design right now and we have. Concepts that actually see it holistically delivered as Ray Given Drive is widened and the first few four lanes of Fowler Way are constructed. Uh, and the tie-in and the transition of how Ray Given will tie into Fowler Way. Uh, protecting as best possible what we can to reduce any kind of disruption and or worst case lost costs in the future to as we see. Uh, Reagan Drive extend first north. And Villanue Road or Fowler Way kind of readjusted on the, on the west side of Ray Given. As well as the long-term future anticipated separated cross interchange work and whatnot. So we're, we're doing all of that in coordination. Uh, and right now we have, you know, uh, we're at a design stage, not a construction stage. So we're just kind of dealing, there is some. Some possible uh land requirements and discussion with Alberta Transportation as that's happening as well with the project delivery and planning.
Sorry, uh, just in relation to the Giroux improvements, it, that's going to excite both on the west and the east side of Giroux. So you're. Are you gonna maybe have a better entry into the Sherone neighborhood or is that part of? A different project?
So what we'll see is on the east side, is it the existing four-lane Giroux corridor that ties into a two-lane that. Connects to Reagan. That will be widened completely to a four-lane core uh cross-section. The west side of the intersection of Reagan and Township five forty eight. Will be uh essentially what we want to do is put it at a four-lane cross-section. But uh that it's anticipated that the five forty eight improvements. Will be required in the longer term, not necessarily in the short term. So we might see a segment that is, you know, widened out to the four-lane cross-section. Uh, and you know, depending at that time when we're, we're approaching the construction. All our planning and design sees a final product to the four, four-lane cross-section and it's just going to be a matter of a. Traffic impact assessment is modeling to see where we're at with uh whether the triggers exist today that actually show a benefit and the need to invest. In the holistic kind of long-term vision, or if it's staged and, you know. Reduces costs and reduces immediate kind of investment, then we'll likely recommend that, but that'll be, that'll be decided upon.
Good, uh, thanks for the. I I'm just saying it might be an opportunity and if there's an opportunity, it might be beneficial. Um, I'm just, I think you perhaps answered this when you were responding to Council Broadhead in relation to dollars, but. The timing of the grant. So I mean, that you, you're confident, we're not getting it like we're, we don't have to upfront something and then gets. And then wait for the grant to come in twenty twenty nine. It's all going to be. Coming in twenty twenty five and then as we move forward, how is, how's the timing of the actual provincial grant monies coming to us?
Uh, right now it's proposed that in twenty twenty five in Q one, the a larger um. Portion of the grant is released, so twenty twenty five million, I believe, is the value that's being released in Q one. Of twenty twenty five, which essentially puts us in a very strong position to construct phase three in its entirety. As well as advance the, the detailed design of phase four. Uh, and even potentially look for initial kind of construction activity, you know, uh with faith, put us in a good position to even tender phase four. Uh, but then the next two years do offer additional release of funds from the provincial grant side of things. So. We're getting the majority of it in the first years, puts up, puts us in a very good procurement position following our kind of policy and practice. Uh, and then allows us to a substantial portion of the work.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Kilik.
Um, just for clarification, Mr. Schick, if um five forty eight is on the other side of Giroux, it's my. My uh bugaboo around the residents of Sherone. That I believe will become one of the main accesses to our Lakeview industrial north sides. Um, I think it's mixed use uh land, so that will be. Uh, constructed to be able to accommodate that in the future.
Correct. Uh, so the anticipated cross-section of that entire corridor, five forty eight is four lanes. And as an example. Uh, the roundabout that exists right now at Range Row two sixty is planned as a two-lane roundabout. But it's only open as a single lane roundabout. So there's anticipated widening. And what I mean is. In the wholeness of time, ultimately it'll be a four-lane corridor as similar to the cross-section of Giroux Road on the east side of Reagan. Uh, however, it'll be a really a case of is it needed, when is it needed and beneficial to invest? We, we recognize not only. The levels of service and the operational impacts, but then potential disruption uh considerations coming back as well with construction. So we want to investigate that, but right now it's, it's largely. The plan right now is that uh the west side of the Reagan Drive intersection will be, will be built holistically for its long term, like the. The four, I say long-term vision, but what I mean is the four-lane long-term at-grade vision. Uh, and whether or not it's, it's kind of narrow to a two-lane with a, to tie in with a roundabout. Uh, uh, that's operating as a single lane kind of roundabout uh and widened in the future. That'll, that's likely the plan, so.
Okay.
We'll see it holistically delivered as a, as a wider corridor, but it just may be staged for that.
Okay, yeah, I, I, and I wanted to be clear on that again, just from a uh. Kind of a residence long-term perspective in that area may start off as a two-lane because that's. It's not all built out there yet and.
That's correct.
But long-term, we have that vision of. Linking into that four-lane or double lane.
That's.
Roundabout and servicing Lakeview. Uh, commercial. Piece.
That's correct. And if I can, just for clarity as well as it will be urbanized. Right now it's, there's a segment that's gravel and we've worked and coordinated with the developer who is. Doing some of the off-site improvements with the Sherone uh development. And so we anticipate when we come in and do the rate given, like it'll be, you know, curb gutter, even if it's a two-lane, it'll be staged to an urban cross-section, two-lane segment. With lighting, street lighting and curb gutter pavement.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, I see no more questions. So Counselor McKay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that engineering uh zero seven four Reagan Drive corridor improvements for phases three and four be approved. In the amount of forty-four million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to be funded accordingly from thirty-five million, one hundred and five thousand dollars. From the provincial capital grant, which is a fifty fifty cost share agreement. Eight million, three hundred and eighty-five, five hundred from the borrowing by law eighteen slash twenty nineteen. Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred from the capital reserve and three hundred and sixty-four thousand from recovered costs.
All right, I'll accept that. Anything to? Comment?
No, I mean, it's a, like you've mentioned, the backgrounder was very good, very detailed, and it's actually very exciting because, I mean. I've seen, um, you know, the. The corridor improvements that we have currently and, and the amount of. Traffic and I believe that that's actually spurred a lot of the development that we're seeing in Riverside now. And so now when we're now. Moving forward and we have to thank our provincial partners for their commitment. And uh, and uh continued involvement in, in stepping up and realizing that there's additional costs. And uh, and uh becoming a really strong partner. And so. Uh, it's just an exciting time because I'm sure when we had the initial vision many, many years ago. Um, that uh this was something that was. Uh, very, very exciting at that time and it's really exciting now that it's. Finally coming to fruition. So thank you to administration for all your hard work and behind the scenes.
Awesome. Counselor Broadhead comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, thank you for those uh comments, Counselor McKay. Uh. I, yeah, Mr. Schick, you had a picture uh in your presentation of us turning sod uh way back in the day. And I would like to say we've come a long way and I too agree with you, Counselor McKay. I think the development of the West. Road, which was originally the West Bypass, has certainly opened us up to. Uh, becoming a city of uh increased uh not only commercial dynamics but residential dynamics and uh. So it's a good thing and to see the part, uh, the, the province come along and uh fulfill their part of the agreement is very helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Kilik.
Uh, I just want to tackle Counselor Broadhead's uh comments. He, he kind of beat me to the punch in regard to recognizing the partnership with. Uh, the provincial government and um all, all too often. We're uh, we're challenged in, in these big capital projects, but uh here's something that's taken a long time. To uh come to fruition, but it all started with that initial agreement. Um, and uh. And written down on paper agreement, um, so that it's, it's assured to be locked into the. Future budgets and uh that's, that's great news, so. Nice to see.
We. Spend a lot of time criticizing the province in this room, um, but this is one that we actually have to give them a whole lot of thanks when I speak to. Other municipalities in Alberta, they are continually surprised that we got this deal with the province. And so um it's good to see that it was in the twenty-five budget. Just likes to get it in our bank account and then finish it or off, but. Anything to close, Counselor McKay?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed. Surpassed unanimously, yes, sorry. And then the next thing on our agenda is, was the traffic by law amendments. Since we discussed this at committee, the whole. But we have, um, I'm not going to read them. It was by law fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four was read three times. Um, through consent and that allowed for some minor. Changes that admin had recommendations and some required distances between election science. So that's what that was all about. Now we're going into council motions. So Counselor Broadhead, you're the first one up. Um. Include accessible and inclusive playground strategy. Why don't you read it in and we'll open it up for questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that the city of St. Albert complete an accessible inclusive playground strategy. Funded from the stabilization reserve in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Where with the work to be completed and reported back to city council by Q two of twenty twenty five.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open up for questions, Counselor Ma- McKay, go ahead.
Uh, just to administration in relation to, um. How does this all factor into our universal access plan that we identified back in twenty eighteen because a big priority, a big piece of it. You know, talked about uh, you know, accessibility, not only for uh. Our, our facilities, our sidewalks, but also it did identify. Uh, playgrounds and identified particularly something that was happening in Burlington, Ontario around the, around that as well. So. Um, where are we on that? Is this part of that or is this something that um this motion maybe moves ahead on a little bit? Where, so I'm just trying to get alignment there.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll ask uh Mr. Slatt to take uh the first, have that response. And then I know we've got Mr. Cameron uh from Wreckin Parks. If they've got any additional context or color on that.
Uh, yeah, so thank you for the question, Counselor McKay. Uh, so basically, uh, as you mentioned, we do have a, a number of. Kind of resources and approved documents within the city and that's gotten us to a certain level. Um, internally, we've, we've uh created some draft policies and some next steps for implementation. Um, as you're aware, one of the things that we intended to do was to go from the Burlington standards to the St. Albert standards. So I would see this work as being. A kind of a, a narrower focus of that work, uh implementing that kind of more specificity, which I think is what. Counselor Broadhead is asking for with respect to the uh playground areas, but there is, there's. Uh, a significant amount of um opportunity here and I think. Through the uh capital project process, we all have kind of a. An informal agreement that we're trying to include uh a, a level of inclusivist. Inclusivity with all of our uh new capital projects, just because that is kind of the way forward. Um, and, and it's just again, trying to identify that what is the right level um. And, and with, with, with respect to many of these features, I mean, as you mentioned, it's sidewalks, it's. Um, any number of structures, we've got an assessment on the three primary structures, Fountain Park Service Place and St. Albert Place. And we've been working on picking away kind of the low hanging fruit right now on those. Um, but this. This portfolio and this, it's, it's a big question, has a lot of capital repercussions, et cetera, but this is kind of that. That next step of digging into the details about putting pen to paper and saying, this is what we intend when we say that we want to have. Inclusivity in our playgrounds.
So, uh, so I mean, and, and. Do you see this particular motion as limiting you a little bit in the sense of, I mean, the one we had, the universal access plan that is, has a detailed plan? And then this motion actually puts, seems to maybe put. Guidelines and try and does, and. So it, does it go against the universal access plan or does it supplement it or does it just make you work on something, make you, make you work quicker on something?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I see this as complimentary and so, yes, it's focused specifically on one element of. Uh, city infrastructure, uh, but it's certainly complimentary to the idea work that's ongoing is, is already been noted by Mr. Sladd. Uh, so I do not see this as limiting. I see this as. Um, yes, targeted and focused, but complimentary.
So there's no conflict in relation to all of our master plans that we have around our parks as they tie into the ASPs because, I mean. We have master plans that identify playground structures and recreation opportunities. So this isn't limiting us there either, that complimentary is there too?
Uh, I believe it is. Certainly I can get uh, uh, Mr. Cameron or Amanda Wild to speak, but. Uh, again, what we're talking about, I think here, um, certainly from administration's perspective is a strategy that would focus on. The tactical components, the look and the feel, what, what a playground exists, right? The designation of. The designation of where playgrounds are, you know, the the ongoing agreements that we've got with with schools and a number of others in terms of how we manage playgrounds. Um, that remains extant. It's really now about the types of playgrounds we built and that ecosystem of playgrounds internal to St. Albert. I see Amanda Wild has popped up. I'll ask if she's got anything she wants to add.
I just uh uh echo C O Fletcher's words that this is really allowing us to take the idea of a playground and refine it. Um, so our park master planning process, it'll give more definition. It says, you know, a playground is needed in this park, but what type of playground? Um, what kind of inclusive and accessible features should you include to what level? Um, we don't really have that direction quite yet, so the strategy would advance some work to really kind of put that next layer of detail into those planning documents as well as inform our RMR planning.
Thank you. That's clarity. I guess question back to you, Council Broadhead, is that your intent in it's not, it's so that when when administration comes back with the strategy, it could potentially say, we don't need an inclusive playground in every one of our master plans, but we could use it here, here and here, correct? Is that what your intent is? Or or would you be wanting to have every time we build a new playground, it would be uh accessible?
Well, certainly covered the question my in my opening comments, but I would suggest that my intent here is is that playgrounds in our community are accessible to everyone. And that doesn't mean we have to change them all tomorrow, uh because the law hasn't changed, made us do it yet. But I've been involved in industries where I've heard arguments where we don't quite need it. You can just ask this person, they'll help you out and then a law changed. And then all of a sudden, you did have to do it, whether you wanted to or not. And so uh I, like I say, what I'm looking for is a master plan to get us to where we need to be ultimately. And and a timeline for it. I I I understand the the financial impact of this. So anyway, but you start off with the master plan. Anyway, that's okay.
All right, so Council Hughes has a question.
I I think Council Jolly might hit her thing first. I don't care though.
Yeah, okay. I think you might have pushed your button first. Natalie, go ahead.
Yeah, so my first question is for probably Mr. Sladd. So regarding the universal accessibility plan, you mentioned that kind of we're at the figuring out next steps for implementation right now. Are we expecting there to be kind of capital dollars attached to those next steps or proposals for for dollars?
Uh, thank you for the question, Council Jolly. So I I guess ul- ultimately, yes. Um, we're in the process right now. We're still at an administrative level and and frankly, trying to work through just just even the ability to develop that or to finish that policy off. Um, we have the terms of reference and we've got the internal working group, but it is something that we do need to finalize it. And then you would see the the kind of capital repercussions.
And what's the barrier to finalizing it?
Uh, it's just a resource perspective. We, yeah.
I would note that we are doing the idea strategy. And so while that's diversity, equity and inclusion, it also includes accessibility. So that will be another complimentary effort pushing forward. But as Mr. Sladd has said, sort of the holistic look at it, um, and I'm being overly simplistic, right? But how do you deal with stuff that already exists and over time bring it up to the standard? And then what's your standard for stuff moving forward, understanding there are more costs in the long term? Um, that's, you know, those policies are pretty significant amount of work and it's the same folks who are right now doing uh the idea strategies, ranking parks, who are doing your line juice by law, who are doing ASPs. And so it it really is a capacity issue. Not that it's not important, but in the queue, um, it is what it is from a prioritization perspective.
Thank you. And then I guess in terms of capacity, um, would it speed speed it up if there were more dollars attached to that? Or is this just something we're doing internally and it and it just hit, hasn't hit the top of the pile yet?
Um, I I would say that, you know, there there's still staff capacity concerns. Obviously, money was thrown at it. We could probably leverage third party or external support. Um, right? And so I guess the short answer is yes, councillor, um, you know, additional money could could speed things up. Um, but we still run into a little bit of capacity with the experts doing the work.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Broadhead, I have one question for you. Um, so 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 your your intent to kind of get this done, I I absolutely understand that. So why not make this, instead of kind of giving money to consultants to create a plan? Why not just say, hey, here's whatever, hundred and twenty five thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, make one park accessible? And then the direction to bring back capital plans to do the lot?
Well.
And and if that's debate, like that's that's
I'd I'd like to cover that in my debate, but having that, I'll I'll sort of answer the question. Accessibility, we've we've taken the perspective of accessibility to to the children, whoever are going to use the playground. But if you do research, accessibility is also for caregivers to get there. And so I had this conversation with people in the community and and they said, well, you don't really need this. They can go to the one accessible park that we have in in Fountain Fountain Park. And he says, oh, yeah, well, that's very good. So if you're accessible, you have to get into your car and you have to go someplace. Whereas if you're able body, you and your children could go to the corner and play. So why would not disabled people have the same right to go to a facility in their corner? Why shouldn't the able bodied get in their car and drive halfway across the city to to have access to a playground? I tell you what, it wouldn't work that way. So why would it work against those that are disabled? And and sometimes it's easy to say it's too expensive. It's not needed. And I would say that's not correct. We need to treat everybody and and I'm speaking to the choir here. I know, uh, Council Jolly, and I don't want to make my debate now. But that's the essence of this particular motion.
Thank you. I am the choir.
Uh, I see. Oh, Sheena, yes, I took you off. All right.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Um, okay, so just so we're clear, if let's just say that the motion never occurred or it didn't pass or whatever. What would be the different product that we'd see a year from now that we're going to get from this versus if we with your current plan? Because you're doing something now, we just haven't seen the final product yet, or you're still working through it? So even if this didn't happen, what would we be looking at that would be different than if this does happen?
You're the Chair to Council Hughes. So within Recreation and Parks, it is within within their three year plan to do this work. This just speeds, they don't have capacity right now to do it internally. So this provides the funding to be able to do this in the next ten months.
Thank you. And the other thing is this would not affect schools, right? Like they would still have their own standards, because I know we the CSAC does recommend that we help them with the money and that sort of thing for the grants. But this wouldn't, there wouldn't be a condition on that. They could still do their playgrounds as they see fit, correct?
Correct. This is just city um owned playgrounds that it would be impacted at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Council Mackay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just
It's okay.
Question arising out of Ms. Anger's response. Um, so in the background and in all my background research, I mean, it clearly identifies what you just said, that you've got a three year work plan established in relation to that. What this motion to me means right now is is that we're going to take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the stabilization review and create a strategy that you already have. That's what, to me, that's my interpretation of this, because, I mean, in reality, you have this isn't a lot, this by the term strategy, and I'm seeing you shaking your head, by the term strategy, I'm saying, well, we're going to take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we're going to give it to a consultant. That consultant is going to come back with a strategy as to Council Jolly's kind of comment. But we're not, there's no actual work going to be done. It's just going to identify moving forward that work's going to be done. And so why wouldn't we just take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and put it into the three year work plan? So that's where my confusion is.
So the three year work plan is to produce the strategy?
Yeah. Okay, that clarifies it, because, I mean, the three year work plan, I thought, oh, well, we're going to have a work plan. We've identified it and we're going to move forward on it.
No, it's so so to your point, the work plan is not conversion of playgrounds. Um, it's producing the strategy that would then guide our future construction and our RMR as our existing playgrounds. And so this front end loads that work brings it forward by about two and a half years.
Okay, thanks. That that that's a little different than the wording, sorry.
My only question was in the background, it talked about the two thousand and twenty six repair, maintain and replace budget. Um, might you might need to incorporate some dollars in into that. Why not also the growth budget for new playgrounds?
Um, to you, Mayor Heron, um, as we bring on new playgrounds, we would likely try and do some of this assessment as we bring on new playgrounds. Um, where we really see the need is in our existing playgrounds, which is the RMR. But I would ask Amanda Wild if she would like to add additional comment or Craig Cameron. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Heron. Uh, I believe the the difference between the RMR and the growth is really just timing of the budget preparations. Uh, we weren't sure that with the timing from RMR budgets, we'd have the accessible inclusive playground strategy finished to to update those budgets, but we would be able to meet the timeline on growth budget development.
So essentially, I'm hearing growth is or RMR is a priority, but it would probably occur in new playgrounds as well.
Yeah, our our intention would be that the the strategy would be applied across all of our playgrounds, whether it's growth or RMR moving forward.
May I also add on to that, Mayor, uh, just that we uh looked at our ten year capital plan and we don't have any playground construction anticipated for twenty twenty six in growth areas?
Okay. I thought you were going to say we don't have any playgrounds for the next ten years. All right, just for clarity. Okay, uh, I see no more questions. So Council Broadhead, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. That really the intent behind this is to uh is to kickstart the idea of doing an accessible playground strategy. Let let me just let me read uh what other parts of our country have to deal with. And it and here's a statement, under the design of public spaces standards for the for this province, cities and other organizations, buildings are redeveloping outdoor play spaces such as playgrounds or parks must make those spaces accessible to children and and caregivers. Don't lose sight of that and caregivers with disabilities. The ground surface on the way to the accessible playgrounds must be firm and stable. And then they go on to a list of things that need to be done. Now let me read out of our background report. Of the sixty five city owned playgrounds, one is fully accessible. The second lodge pole had to be uh um fundraised by a local family, which is all good. I mean, it was it was a great initiative and it raised the uh raised the profile of this question uh for me. So what do we do in the meantime? And how do we manage sixty five playgrounds, which quite honestly represents a significant financial uh burden if we were to immediately have to raise the uh the accessible standards of this playgrounds? But comes to mind is how do you eat an elephant and you eat an elephant one bite at a time? And how do you get the the playgrounds in our community accessible to the to caregivers and to those? Uh, by doing one at a time in a way that you can afford to do it. But in order to do that with any kind of uh practical success in mind, you have to plan how to do it. And what does it mean when we're going to say we're going to make sixty five playgrounds accessible? What does that mean? Does that mean it all has to be Fountain Park? I don't know, but we need to find that out. What what does it mean in in cities in Ontario that all of their playgrounds have to be meeting this standard? And what are the timelines that the government will allow them to do that under? So those are the things that I envision with this particular work to be done. And and our administration quite honestly is flat out. And to to have this work done off the corner of the desk is not fair to them. So we engage professionals within the industry. And I know there are out there and administration came back with a with an idea around a hundred thousand. I said a hundred and twenty to make sure they do the lit review and all the best practices across our country in order to to make sure that our strategy around this very important uh physical asset in our community is done correctly. It's important, otherwise we wouldn't have sixty five of them in our community. So I'm just hopeful that in in the years to come we'll have thirty accessible, then we'll have forty accessible, and then then we'll have fifty accessible. And ultimately, they'll all be accessible to a certain standard that we have defined. So that's my hope behind this motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The choir put up her hand very quickly. Go ahead, Council Jolly.
Thank you. I I I love the intent behind this motion. I think, as you know, you know, my my day job is a big part of it is taking care of caregivers and and figuring out what I can do to support caregivers. So I I love that that's included in in kind of your intent. Um, that said, I'm I'm really concerned about creating another strategy when we haven't even finished really the overarching universal accessibility plan. Um, I I'd really like to see that be be a priority. Um, if this motion was either to um to change our 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 capital growth or RMR policies to to say that, you know, we're we're not replacing like for like, or we're not growing in a way that that is creating more inaccessible spaces. Um, I I would absolutely support it if his motion was to, hey, here's a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, you know, the next park that that we have RMR on or that we're building, make sure it's accessible. I would support that. Um, if this motion was, hey, for every single capital charter that we see coming across our our desks, it should include a provision for accessibility. I would support that. But I I just can't support another um kind of a hundred thousand dollar bill to a consultant when when we could just get the work done. Um, and when we can finish the work that that we haven't even finished yet. So that's my really long winded way of saying absolutely, this is a priority. Um, but I think there's a a better way to do it in terms of making our dollars go further in in a time where they're absolutely being stretched. So thank you for bringing it forward, really important projects that that you're talking about, but I can't support this at this time.
Council Mackay.
Yeah, I'm glad the choir spoke first, because, um, I mean, I'm definitely part of the choir. I mean, and you can see it, and I think the city is a big part of the of the choir as well, and I don't mean to be glib by that, but I'm just saying we've identified a number of strategic documents in as it relates. And I I took and thank you, Council Broadhead, because it really allowed me to actually go back and look at what the city is actually doing or undertaking and in relation to accessibility. And and yes, some of the documents are old and but that just speaks to some of the complexities around implementation of something this um important. I mean, but just for anybody listening, we do have the St. Albert Universal Accessibility Plan that we referred to. We have the park and open space standards uh and guidelines. And then we do follow many of the best practices, Canadian Standards Association, Playground Safety Associations. And we did look at as Mr. Sladd had identified, looking at creating our own accessible design standards arising from the the worker, when we did do a background investigation as to what other municipalities are doing or what other municipalities are faced with. And and you're correct, in Ontario, their OH and S requires and their other government legislation requires different rules than we currently have. And I'm not saying that we wait until we're told to do it. I think that's a strong argument. And I'm going to be listening to your closing arguments quite closely. But right now, I'm I'm more falling in line that I think that we've we're we're working towards this. And I think it's a it it is a priority. Yes, this moves it a little bit forward, but I I would much rather see it have come forward as outlined by Council Jolly's argument. So I'm not going to um reiterate them, but I will keep an open mind. um reiterate them, but I will keep an open mind and listen to your closing arguments.
Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think what I heard was that um we we have our Parks and Rec team looking at this, but it's part of a three year work plan. And waiting three years is too long. We've identified that this is a a uh requirement that we would like to see brought forward and advanced faster. I think people have even spoken and said, geez, just use a hundred and twenty thousand to do one park right away. But that still doesn't give us the long term strategy that we're looking for. Um, and it doesn't, as I look at the process and the the five bullets that are listed, provide costing associated with recommendations. So it doesn't give us that long term strategy that we're we're looking for. So as I heard uh our C O say that uh this advances that work. Uh, it gets a consultant onboard right away and can bring that plan forward quicker rather than waiting for three years and or as other counselors have said, maybe doing it on the, you know, as a side project on the the corner of their desk. Uh, this puts a a hundred and twenty thousand dollar focus on it. And that's a good thing, and we'll we'll come out of it with a good, clear plan associated with playgrounds. The rest of the accessibility work will continue, whether it's sidewalks, bus shelters, washrooms, uh et cetera, et cetera, that we're all uh working on. Uh, that that will continue to evolve over time, but this takes a specific need of playgrounds. Puts us focus of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on getting that done sooner than later and gives us a clear uh plan, standards and guidelines and costing associated with it for, as we've heard in the answer, uh both our RMR and longer term, any new uh projects or park parks that would would be would be built um through our our cap new capital growth. So I I like what I've heard and I I like the debate that we've had. But I I certainly support Counselor Broadhead's uh direction and and motion as it's uh proposed here.
Counsel Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I understand the idea of having to do the one offs and just save, let's just throw that a hundred and twenty thousand to fix some of the playgrounds. But the challenge then is just that we're only here for the year. And then after that point, there's no legacy to actually continue this. There's an idea that it will be done in three years. It's also just depend upon accessibility of the staff to be able to get that done. It may be four years. Like, we really don't know when that's gonna come before. That's their goal, but it's also just about work demands. So we even if we said, okay, we're gonna put out two more playgrounds, we're gonna use this money and change our two more playgrounds next year. Okay, so now the city has four. But we don't have any other standards to indicate what's gonna go forward after that. And uh, so what regardless of where this motion goes, Counsel Broadhead, I would suggest that perhaps for this next budget or before then, we you may want to put forward a motion that the next RMR ones that are planned for next year have an inclusive component added to them. So that it regardless of what happens between now and whenever the report does show up, that um is not, we're not waiting in limbo just to have a even if it's additional costs, and that will also give us an idea of how much more money it might be required to actually make this a reality. So honestly, I'm still thinking about it, but I can see the value in this in that you're basically it's a hundred and twenty thousand, but you're gonna be fast tracking it eighteen plus months from where it would been otherwise. So I guess the real question is, do we think it's worth the eighteen months or however many months above that that it might take to get to council's desk to um have the plan enacted or not? And I I guess that's where I'm still trying to debate is should we just put the money into the one offs with the intention that or save the next two years, we're giving extra money for inclusive playgrounds and then give us the overall strategy in three years? Or do we say, give us the strategy this year and have a separate motion to discuss having that? So I'm debating this in my head, as you can hear, um, because I'm thinking what Counsel Jolly said is also relevant, saying, let's just do that money now. And to do a stopgap and then have that and with the intention of having it come forward, or do we say we want the to play the strategy first before we fill in the stopgap? It's a toughie. So I'm just gonna keep thinking about it. I'm gonna listen to what you have to say, but I think that there's a there's merits on both sides of this fence and this one. Thanks.
Counsel Bremensky, you're up next.
Thank you through the mirror. I guess we can agree that we all almost haven't decided yet. Essentially, but um when I'm looking at, you know, I see Counsel Broadhead's intent in this, it's a great intent. We all want the inclusive inclusivity out there. Um, but administration is working on this at the same time. The difficulty I have is a consultant's report. It depends on which cult consultant does it, whether they'll get in all the, you know, the government ideas and what's coming forward, or it'll just be a report at this point in time. Might be obsolete a year from now, or, you know, when it's really needed, whereas administration will be working through it as it comes. So um I appreciate the intent of speeding things up. But we will have to get it right and um I'm kind of leaning towards administration being on top of things more than a consultant's report will be as it evolves. And we've we've been doing great work with all of our parks, you know, there even in our totally inclusive park, we have some people commented, they liked things, they didn't like things. So it's a it's all a learning and progressive um process. Uh, so I just, I guess I just answered my question that I won't uh I won't support this right now because I think that the um you know, the consult's report will probably not stand the test of time. Although um I do appreciate uh Counsel Broadhead's intent in this one, and we all want inclusivity in parks, and we want to do the best job we can. Thank you.
I guess I get to speak too. Um, hopefully I can help Counsel Broadhead with some of the indecisive uh counselors in the room. Um, I think this is a great motion, Counsel Brody, because it really talks about process. Um, you've identified something that was administratively already identified. But you're pushing it forward as a priority of yourself and of hopefully this council. Um, everyone in this room has said inclusivity and accessibility is a priority. But um without a strategy, I don't think we can get it done. And and so that's why I like the process instead of just saying pick a park and make it in inclusive and accessible, you're saying we need to think long term into the future. And maybe the strategy says that not every park is accessible and inclusive. Maybe that's what the strategy says, maybe it identifies some that are specifically geared to mobility issues and some that are specifically geared to sensory issues. Um, and it and that's maybe is the cheaper option, more efficient way to to build our community and yes, you might have to get in a car and drive, but I remember putting my kids in cars because the park in our playground didn't have the zoomy things that the kids liked, so we would go to the park that had that. Um, I also would hope that it's not just playgrounds that we would have in this strategy, it would be um splash pads and bike skills parks and maybe pump tracks and skate parks, whatever, uh, dog parks could even be included in this plan. So until you have um a plan, you'll never you'll never actually move forward on your on your priorities, and I believe that this says a statement about who we are as a community, so I think this is a great motion. I wholeheartedly support it. I'll let you close.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the intent behind the motion is is to create a strategic framework within which to address uh this particular issue around um accessibility and and playgrounds in particular. Let's be clear, our current policy is replacing like for like, which means if it's inaccessible then it'll be replaced with an inaccessible park. That's our current strategy. So until uh uh work like this is done sometime in the future, it's um, it is what it is. And without a strategy, quite honestly, it's, and if we uh just give money to it now, it's ready, aim, shoot or ready, shoot, aim. And if you don't have some mechanism to decide, this is how we're going to attach attack this particular issue within our community, then then you're you're just doing one offs. And I don't think that's the best governance level discussion that we should be having at council. We should be talking about what kind of uh uh direction we're giving to our administration from a policy perspective within our community. And uh and quite honestly, uh, the consultant, we like to use the word consultant, but they are professionals in their field. And they will give a uh, depending on how the RFP is written. But they'll give a learned uh articulate plan to administration in order to address this in light of the current jurisprudence within our environment. So I'm hoping that that council will understand the long term nature of this particular um um request. And uh and hopefully we'll go forward with a plan that uh that sets St. Albert up for success. We may be well ahead of our time in Alberta, but we're not ahead of our time in our country. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that motion passes with Counsel Bremensky, Jolly and Makai opposed. Okay, we are now moving on to eleven point two, which is Counsel Hughes's motion. So same routine, Counsel Hughes, I'll get you to read it in.
So I sent a an email that I just amended it slightly. It doesn't intend, I just wanted to clarify about the um public engagement. So I just added something saying that, you know, I didn't want to limit the public engagement to just the seniors advisory if this staff wanted to go further, but they're not required to. So that the administration engaged the seniors advisory committee and other sources as needed, such as other municipalities using anti-slip materials regarding potential standard upgrades for studies, safety slip prevention provisions to city owned wooden boardwalks, bridges and wooden stairs, and to provide the city a capital charter as well as a summary of the feedback from the seniors advisory committee by November seventh of twenty twenty five. So I changed the date as well.
All right, I'll open it up for questions. Does anyone have any questions? Counsel McKay.
I just asked administration around capacity issues and whether you could you do this internally, you're not gonna have to go out and with now with the modification in the uh motion, potentially there would be best practice reviews and other things that would require maybe a funding source?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll ask Donnie George, Director of Engineering, who's responsible for that, to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Um, good afternoon, council. Thank you for your question, uh, Counselor McKay through the chair. The uh answer to that is the option two that we have provided, that we could potentially use the twenty twenty five plan budget uh for sourcing the resources that is required, whether it's internally or if you have to go externally. We have uh the way the motion is written, it spans across many assets now, so we do have RMR budget planned for twenty twenty five, so it's a question of carving out a few grand here and a few grand there between the different charters to come up with the roughly the twenty thousand dollars if the internal resourcing is limited for twenty twenty five.
So the amount was twenty thousand. I was just trying to rotate through the second motion here, the alternative mo- motion. So is that the amount, twenty thousand dollars you figure it's gonna take?
The anticipated cost for just a quick review, that includes not just developing the standards, it's it's as um Counselor Hughes amended the motion, it's a scan across various municipalities and also coming up with the inventory of the assets that we need to handle. We don't have full confidence of the whole scale of the inventory that we need to uh track down here, so that would definitely be part of that twenty thousand dollars as well.
Yeah, I guess, well, I have you, Donnie, in relation to my next question. I mean, certainly um slippery doesn't necessarily always apply to wooden. You can get uh some surfaces like new cement or treated cement that is also could be considered slippery hazardous when wet or under different. So would you would you plan on looking at all surfaces with that amended uh motion just or just stick to wooden surfaces because of that's what the motion is?
The right now, the plan is just to look at the wooden structures. Um, were this good lead to Counselor McKay, what we are anticipating is when we engage with the consultant, they'll come up with all kinds of materials that can be applied practically without adding too much of a burden on to our operations and maintenance. So what comes after the implementation is the added cost on the operation side, which we are actually watching out how we can contain that within reasonable uh standards. So whenever we introduce a new standard, let's say if St. Albert is leading edge on this and we don't have any examples to draw from, um, likely path could be we may pilot the implementation of whatever options that we may find through this process and then pilot it for a few structures and see how they perform over a couple of years to three years, um, and then implement it globally across the full scale of the asset.
Yeah, I just remember we number of years ago, we tried that new crosswalk and it was extraordinarily slippery. So um, okay, that's, I appreciate the uh comments. You sound like you have a cold.
I do. Sorry, I'm so choppy today.
No, I know you came through quite well, but you just sounded like you have a cold. I hope you get better soon.
Thank you.
And in your amended motion, you're asking for a broadened um engagement, which is awesome, because that was one of my concerns. Uh, but why are you not asking for a summary of the feedback of that engagement? You're only asking for a summary of the seniors advisory committee.
Well, I was just expecting that they would provide that. I guess I just wanted to make sure that this senior advisory committee engagement wasn't like lumped in. We said this is what we actually heard from the committee, but that's not to preclude us from telling us what we heard from anything else.
So could we just say summary of the feedback?
Sure. Okay, I'm more than I'm willing to, because I don't think you've accepted that. Um, so I can just say summary of the feedback.
Just for clarity.
Yeah, I just don't want it to just I guess, again, this will be for the next council, because this will not be our our budget decision, but I I'm just hoping that we just don't just say, here's a summary of the feedback and kind of lump the seniors advisory into just here's a just a general summary. Um, the other question I had though before we goes for it is the just to felp on that wooden. So, Donnie, if would it be better for you if we just said boardwalk, bridges and stairs and not limited to that? Okay, the initial areas are the most likely to be slippery are the wooden ones, but would it be better if we just remove the word wooden from those three?
Looking at the budget that we have recommended, I would recommend to keep it within wooden. And we can definitely, based on the studies, we can definitely expand to others after. So let's see what we can get out of the twenty K and then go from there. So in terms of scope management, I think it's better to leave it as wooden for now.
Okay, and just to be clear, I'm not intending for you to have to even talk to the other municipalities. I just did not want the motion to limit your capabilities of getting the resources that you required to provide the recommendation to council. So I've just provided some suggestions, but it just says such as, it doesn't say must be, you know, so just so we have clarity for you and staff that uh I just I wanted to broaden your ability to do what you wanted to do. That's all it is, but it's not requiring it.
Counsel Kilik.
Uh, just a point of clarification. Counselor Hughes's motion has wooden boardwalks, bridges and stairs specifically identified. The current state in the backgrounder um includes those three and that it it also says active transportation structures. I don't know what that means. Could could someone clarify that for me?
Is if Cameron can take a first step at it. He's on it.
Sure. Thank you to the Chair to Counselor uh Kilik. Uh, I I believe that word may be a leftover word from uh an edit ration of this. When we're talking act active transportation structure, that would include the three items that were listed uh before that term.
Okay, fair fair enough. I just wanted to make sure that we're we're still staying focused on the three items as asked in the motion then.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question, and I think from administration's understanding, it's it's really the wooden um inventory, right? Um, that facility that people would walk on at the end of the day, put that in super layman's terms for you, but hopefully that helps. You're exactly right, you know.
Hi, Mr. Fletcher, I appreciate layman's terms.
Uh, Counsel, so you're done, Counsel Kilik. Counsel McKay.
I I'm just going back to the amount of financial commitment that is expected in this work. Uh, Counsel Hughes, would you put the twenty thousand dollars in there or are you intending just to let your motions sit as it is?
Well, when I look at the background, there was three choices. There was one to say, we'll get it done this year for the twenty thousand or approval of the proposed motion delivered within existing resources. And so that's where they said they want an extra year to complete it, and that's why I chose the option B. Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see the twenty twenty five. I apologize.
And just so you know that I would, I'm gonna request that we split this vote. So the first part about the engagement and then it's still there, right? Yeah. And then the part that says provide council capital charter is a separate motion. So split those out for voting purposes, but no amendments other than that. Any more questions? Okay, I see none. I'll accept your motion, the plural, because we split them and I'll let you speak to the engagement side first.
Yeah, I might just lump them just for so that we can get this course to this done. But I mean, obviously, we all know where this stemmed from, which was the White Swiss Forest. And I thought that some of the arguments that were presented at that time, actually, about, well, this is the one off and we need to look at the other structures. And I thought, yeah, actually, we should look at the other structures. So we don't actually have these standards put in place for the wooden structures. We just basically are not doing anything at all. And I would like to see us know what we should be doing going forward. And if if the recommendation is we don't do anything, well, then that's the recommendation. So the capital charter, even if we moved it forward, it might be that we don't need one. And so then it would be that's just what it is. Or under limited circumstances, this is where it goes. So I'm not suggesting that every single boardwalk, bridge or sidewalk or stairs needs to have anti-slip on there. But what I do think is that we need to have some kind of parameters put in place that say this is when it would be implemented. If it is that the parameters are that we should have something on every every one of them, then that's fine. But if the parameters come forward, say, only under these circumstances or this is where we feel that this is where we might slip the the most, which is why I'm suggesting we talk to the seniors advisory committee, because they're the people who many times are more vulnerable to slipping to come back and say, this is where we would think that it would be the most value to us. It's not raining, right? Just sounds really loud all of a sudden in here. So that this is really what it is, is just, let's just go talk and see if we need it and find out what other municipalities are doing. And the reason why I added this upon reflection was just that I would love to know after the municipalities that have done it, what they think of it. Has it been valuable? How much does it cost them? That sort of thing. And so that way, we then when the decision comes forward, it's it's a more complete picture of what's going on. That being said, as I said before, I'm not requiring that staff do this. I'm just trying to make sure that the box is not limited for their tools as to how they acquire this information. But that if they said, you know, we talked to four of them and they use it under these circumstances and they found that this has been effective and this hasn't, it just helps us that we have a more successful pilot project in the event that there was one approved. So I'm just trying to give the, and it won't be even us, it'll be the next council, but give this next council this information before the budget process to make a decision if they think it's worth going forward for a pilot project, as Donny said. And to see what kind of standards we have so that it's uniform and that we don't have one offs. And we can also have some justification as to when we are or are not putting anti-slip in there. But and the and the other thing is that some people think if you're going to be putting anti-slip, that the entire boardwalk has to be covered in black anti-slip. That also does not need to be the case. You could put it where just like one half of it is anti-slip and the other half is not, so that people who don't like walking on it don't have to, but you have the option when you feel it's necessary. So I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we can solve the issues of potential safety hazards on wooden structures. Uh, it's just a matter of, you know, what the, after we look at it and hear what other people have done, because I think that, you know, we, yeah, we could go ahead and do a consultant. But I actually think, you know, the best way to learn is from other people's mistakes. So if we actually go and talk to other municipalities have actually implemented it, it's the easiest way to find out the best way to solve the problem. And and then just talk to others as they feel necessary to see what they think would be the most value. So I don't think this news advisor committee is just going to have blanket yes, put on everything. I think they're going to have a very thorough discussion about it. This is their task as well. So I think that they would also just provide some kind of honest feedback about whether or not they think it is valuable. And I honestly don't know whether what they would say at the end of the day. But I would love to see just having this address and not just saying I'm comfortable walking on these platforms therefore everyone else is, let's go back and just see who's using it, why, and some kind of recommendations. So we'd actually know whether or not this is something we should be considering or not moving forward, you know? And and I do understand, just to close this up for now, that we can walk on this in June when it's raining and say it's fine, but that's actually not the slipperiest time. The slipperiest time is ironically, it's May, it's in the not May, it's in spring and fall. It's when the frost can hit. That's when you're going to have the slipperiness. It's not just when it's wet, but it's when it's also wet and icy. It's not when it's covered with a foot of snow, because you again, you have traction. It's it's just that a couple of months at the beginning of the year and a couple of months towards the end of the year that are actually the anti-slip comes in as the most valuable. That being said, it can also be when it's wet, but there's a specific times of year where the anti-slip is the the most appreciated by those who need it. So that's it for now. Thanks.
Councillor Jolly.
Thank you. So I've actually personally complained about a slippery surface in St. Albert a few years ago. This particular surface, it was not wood. It was on one of the pathways in the forest park ravine. It wasn't because of frost, it was because of the type of application we were using to fix the sidewalk. So I I appreciate that, you know, walking around public spaces. We're going to run into slippery areas and and we should avoid kind of having those as much as possible. That said, we've never received a complaint about this issue. And you know, because it's such an administrative matter, I'm I'm confident that if there there were concerns that were brought forward, like what I brought forward with the walkway, I I'm I'm confident that staff would deal with it administratively because that's that's what they do. I'm also quite concerned about internal capacity. You know, we heard just in, you know, just this afternoon that our universal accessibility plan is delayed effectively because we don't have the capacity to get through it. And projects like these are going to delay that further. And, you know, that universally universal access accessibility plan, it would actually consider accessibility issues like what you're discussing here. You know, we we want people to be able to access our 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 walkways and our parks all of the time. And that plan deals with this kind of issue and I I I just, I I don't want to pile on more work when we've never received a complaint and and we don't, when we don't have capacity. So those are my thoughts for for both these motions.
Anyone else have debate? Seeing none, I'll close, councillor Jolly.
I mean, it's okay, it's all right. I just, I just wanted to just to mention a couple of things. I have received complaints about slipping. So I just haven't like made a giant broadcast. I put in a CI asking when things are going to be done. I have had people that have fallen and have had like broke their wrist and then asked me about addressing it and I didn't, they didn't want to make a big deal about it. And I just asked about when it was going to be addressed and it was answered. So it isn't that this never has happened. And if someone's able to slip, it slips and is able to recover, you know, it's like, even if they're angry, you have that like that fourteen day waiting period where you get angry, but then you kind of forget about it by the time you get home and you don't bother calling and who do you call anyway, even if you're upset? So you have that issue. But this is also just about the accessibility component, as you said, councillor Jolly, and this is this is an essential, essential component, I think, is allowing people to be able to walk through the city without having to worry about slipping on areas that may be high risk. And that's what this intention is to do. So similar to just having a plan for the playgrounds, this is about specifically making sure that this area is not overlooked as the staff moves forward with their accessibility plans and to allow us to happen. And the reality is that the staff said that they think that they either can do it by the end of next year or they have the money in the budget next year to accomplish this goal. So this is, you know, you could choose it like fast, good or cheap. And I I took out the fast so that we could still do it for less money. And so I'm just hoping that this uh this passes so that we can get some kind of guidelines about what should be moving forward for this and put this matter to rest. That's it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with councillor Bremenski, Broadhead and Hughes in favor. Do you still want to do the project charter without the consultation?
There's no need.
So withdrawing the last part. On the floor. So next on the agenda is information requests, notice of motion and announcements. I don't recall getting any IRS or anything. Cheryl?
We just got one in from councillor Hughes.
Oh, today?
Yeah.
Okay, might as well read it in now.
Please provide an estimate the cost to have year round planters in the downtown district and the cost and other considerations such as snow management. If we were to have winter planters in the locations where feasible in the in the location or to replace the platonia planters in the summer. So I put where also, but to remove that. So the intention, just so that we're clear, is I'm not removing the platunias for year round. It's going to be swapped out. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you sent that to, oh, wait. Yeah, there it is. Okay. All right. And councillor Mackay, go ahead.
Just an announcement, actually, a congratulatory announcement for Mr. Fletcher, all of the staff's hard work yesterday in relation to candidate celebrations right from service place and or any involvement that you had in the Walk for Reconciliation as well. But certainly, looking at the numbers and of individuals that were there and and you know, really the smiles on the faces and and other enjoyment. I mean, it was really good. So I know I saw Anna and I know she had a big crew. I know Danielle took holidays. So, but I went to the, took advantage of, went to Millennial Park last night and watched the Kung Fu Panda Four. I'm sure five is coming out soon, but just watching the young families and and intergenerational families coming in to watch that, you know, it's it's fantastic. And so I know there was a lot of staff prep on that. And then, as usual, the fireworks and all of the so congratulations and please make sure that you pass on my thanks and I'm sure all of council's thanks for a job very well done.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you for doing that, councillor Mackay, councillor Bremenski.
Thank you through the mayor. Just an announcement on the Environmental Committee. I just want to commend them for their environmental report on contaminated sites. They, the group is expert in what they do and the advice that they provide. And they put a lot of work into that. So we put it on consent and I just want to thank them for their work and make sure they're acknowledged for that. Secondly, the Fowler Park mural that's up now, it was announced to the Arts Committee that it had been installed six days prior to our meeting without fanfare. So I went out to the park afterwards and took pictures and there was lots of athletes out there and we have, they're all loving it. So again, I want to thank everybody involved in that project. It looks beautiful and I can encourage the public to go out and see it and take some pictures there as well. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any information requests or notice of motions? All right, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to go into camera to talk about the corporate safety and security update. Councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That council moved in camera to discuss a matter pursuant to section eighteen and twenty four one A of the Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act.
Awesome. Call for the vote. That motion passes unanimously unanimously. We'll meet in council lounge.